You always see what you guys see what I'm doing. I don't know why.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, just hold your own comments for five minutes. Yes, because I'm gonna be number one today. I'm Nancy Youska, my husband and I live and farm in Buckingham Township. I'd like to address the current open seat on the planning and zoning commission. I'm sure the transparency of this process is very important to you. Did all three of you read through each application submitted?
I have, I gave them all the...
I just did it this morning, just a couple minutes ago.
Would you please tell us what criteria you used when ranking the applicants?
Just... Basically who we felt would do the best job for serving on the board.
I would like clarification from each of you that you are fully aware that Iowa code requires, requires no person shall be appointed to any board, commission, committee, or council that would cause the number of members of one gender to be greater than one half. That's called gender balance.
I do, yes.
You're all aware of that requirement. I'm sure the transparency of this process is very important to you. I was one of the applicants, a female from the far northern section of the county, but I did not hear from any of you, and I'm curious how many of the applicants were interviewed?
We didn't take any interviews. We went off of the...
You did no interviews? So you did not compile a set of questions if you were not gonna interview you? That's a non-applicable. Did all three of you select the same individual to fill the seat?
Yes.
I'm sure the transparency of this process is very important to you. Have any of you asked any other individual to complete an application after the September sixteenth deadline?
I don't believe so. I think there was two other applicants that came in late.
But the deadline was, irregardless of the deadline then?
We did put them in with the other guests.
So the deadline is just like out the window? When were those late ones sent to you? Like a day late or a week late after the deadline?
It was only, I think, a day late, I believe, one of them, I remember.
So we could assume that the auditor's office has a date stamped application prior to the... Well, this is in... Prior to the September sixteenth deadline, any person considered to act... I mean, she has an application, but they're not all prior to the deadline, am I correct?
Is that right, Laura?
Maybe they have a date stamped.
So I, again, I'm... How many do you have here?
Did you give me part of them back?
I have six here, but I don't see... Oh!
I think you don't have more.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Seventeen.
They weren't all thirty-two years old.
Again, I'm sure the transparency of this process is very important to all of you. I understand it's important that you, that you select an individual to fill the seat that's neutral, is that correct?
That's correct. Try and do, yes.
Was a neutral stance always of importance to you?
Yes, yes.
Always? So Craig Sash, who you just recently reappointed to another five-year term, and who has signed an easement with Salt Creek, do you feel he's neutral?
Yes.
Do you feel he's neutral with signing an easement?
I think he could have looked at things openly after signing an easement.
And just to be clear, it's not just an easement, he has a turbine in phase one. He's getting a turbine.
I didn't know that till recently, and that's kinda hippie to me.
So can, could you please explain how and why a board of five men, two of which are from Tama, Toledo, provide any kind of balance in terms of gender or geography?
Wayne lives just east of Toledo.
Okay, well, I said Tama, Toledo. I mean, we're not talking Buckingham Township, Geneseo, the northern tier of townships.
I'm not sure where Doug lives. Where's Doug live?
South of Daisers.
South of Daisers. And Wade, where's he at? Up there?
But we're talking five individuals, three of which are in the southern half of the county. Alright, so I hope my effort to repeatedly speak about the importance of the transparency of this process did not go under this.
So the one that's getting chosen, Dwayne, when did he apply? What's the date?
Two twenty.
Of this year?
Yeah.
So what you said, a few days after September sixteenth, that was a bit of a stretch?
Sounds misleading.
We have the, we have the minutes that says the window was closed. What was the date, Nancy?
September sixteenth.
September sixteenth.
That application should be ineligible. February twentieth?
Should be thrown out.
February twentieth of this year, guys? When you guys told us... There was a deadline to be met. For you to appoint somebody to put an application in the twentieth of February, when you gave us the deadline of September? Guys, that's not transparent. A few days? The applications that we got, we all pretty much felt was... They were biased, they were often, almost completely, you're correct. We met the requirements.
So how do you assume I'm biased? I mean, there's more to wind, there's more to zoning than you need solar, right? There's a lot to do.
I understand that, but we wanted, we wanted a range of people that would have different ideas that could be balanced out.
Okay, so you got...
So we got Wade, and, and we got... Craig Sash?
Yeah.
Honey, what do you have?
Why can't there be one of us? I've probably read the ordinance more than anybody in this county. I've read Butler's, I've read worse, I've read Tama's. How, I, I applied as well. How does that make me not qualified? Just because I am part of the TCAT group, Craig has a turbine?
Yeah, well, you've got...
That doesn't make me not qualified just because I'm trying to protect my family and get ordinances up there then.
We're trying to be neutral with the people we get.
So what about the current people? Do they need pulled off if they're not neutral?
Well, we've talked about that.
Can you explain that?
Will you explain it?
Yes, please.
Well, we talked about it, then we decided not to. We thought, well, we'll just leave Wade on there, we'll leave your husband Doug on there, and we'll get Craig on there, and we'll... I don't know if Darren Thiessen, he told me that he wasn't sure what he was... He, he was afraid he was gonna get sued.
Correct. Somebody gave him a phone call before the meeting.
So, you know, I, somebody needs to try to reach out to him and ask him if he's gonna be involved.
Well, Doug's tried to reach out to him, but he's way returning phone calls along with commissioner. He received... I should correct it and say rumor has it... That he received a phone call. He was planning on coming to the meeting, and he received a phone call reminding him that he would probably get sued.
Threatened.
Those were the more touring the public area.
Rumor, by rumor, who made that call?
No one has fessed up to it.
Okay, I mean, alright.
That's why I said rumor has it, but he's... It could be, it could be dug into you. I would say the best way to handle that is to actually talk to Darren himself.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully he will feel, feel so he can come and give his opinion.
I hope so, as long as...
And, and not be threatened by a lawsuit.
That would be great. I mean, because you're, you're, um... Saying that they can meet as long as they don't talk about the win, which is the problematic area, so that would be wonderful if he felt like he could get back on it. And sometime I would like to clarify with you a couple things.
Because our intent is to get this board, zoning board filled today, and then call the zoning board together to start talking about solar. To get something worked out for us or... Yes?
Um, why do you feel that this gentleman is a better choice than any of the females that applied? I know you're, you're talking about neutralism, but why is, why is a supposed bias that you have no proof of more important of a clarification than the fact that you do not have any gender balance at all on the zoning board? And this would be your second appointment to disregard that since, since it's been brought up with the group?
We just feel that he is the best qualified one that we've got.
What qualifications, we've asked, what qualifications have you looked at? As we can tell, it has to be a resident of Tama County, somebody who does not live within city limits, and gender balance. Those are the requirements we see. What, what qualifications are you looking at?
Just his open-mindedness.
That's the one that you think he's open-minded.
Well, he served on... He served on the board for a while, and he did a great job.
Well, and Kurt admitted, he hasn't even seen four of the applications before you guys decided this.
How could you guys accept an application the twentieth of February when you required a deadline of September from us? Can you explain that? That, that person is ineligible, period. That application, shh.
You set the deadline.
You set, you guys set the deadline.
And it's in the minutes.
You would make us follow it. Explain that.
We're ready.
To, to me, it seems like you sought this...
Who sought him out? Who went out to talk to him and asked if he would fill this position?
Yeah, that's, that's what it seems like you definitely...
We called him Monday. Who's "we"? The three of us. We called him Monday and asked him if he was willing to serve, and he said he would. And Dan, you said a day or two late. February twentieth was not brought up.
That was a week ago.
Guys, the morals of this county is swirling in the toilet.
And the other part too, Dan, you kept saying that that spot would not be filled till litigation was done. That spot would not be done, be filled until Salt Creek was done building. So then all of a sudden it pops up, Todd shows up last week, and you're filling it. It's, I know solar came, and I mean, we appreciate you looking to get that, the solar, you know, mortoring or ordinance or something changed.
And that's...
But that's hard too, when the public hears it's not being filled, we're not doing nothing.
And that's why we feel a real need to get this position filled, get the zoning board up and moving and running to, to address the solar. We're trying, we're trying to do what you folks have asked us to do.
We asked you months ago.
We filled the requirements. We met the requirements laid down by you guys, and then you changed it on us.
You bypassed your own rules, is what you did.
Exactly. But no, I don't think we did it.
Deadline. It isn't like you had, you had no activists to fill it, but you guys went on beyond that and waited, look at somebody else to fill it.
And again, you found somebody who would be more in line with what the board wants. Basically, that's what it would be said.
And your nepotism just continues in this county. Let's just call it like we see it.
I mean, let's be honest.
Let's be honest.
Let's be honest.
You can't deny that.
You went out and searched this individual to fill this spot on the board. Twelve good applicants there. Didn't even call them in for an interview. Didn't even hear what their opinions were, what their concerns were. You knew exactly who you wanted on this board.
You got it.
And you went out there and got it.
I mean, I've thirty years of real estate experience, served on board of adjustment in another county. I didn't even get a phone call.
If anyone on this board had as much experience as Heather has had contacting other counties, she's got a lot of, of work already done. I would think that if you were interested in getting, uh, uh, the commission to work soon, and someone that will work for it, you're looking at somebody like that.
The research she has done for you guys has been unbelievable besides raising a family and maintaining a job. And here she is today. Again, this can't be live streamed, so she's gotta take off from her job to be here.
And you always could say, don't look at win, like I know you guys probably are already going to say. We got solar, we got pipelines, we have tons of ordinances. We've been sitting here week after week saying that, like, we can't, we have to be proactive and look at these things, you know, like, we, I don't think we've touched these in years.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to fill the zoning board. Personally, I don't think three or four people from your group would be fair to have on the zoning board.
Wait, where do you get three or four? It'd be, it'd be one new person, because no one on the current zoning board is in TCAT or has a bias that, that I know of, besides Craig that has a turbine on the other side.
Doug and, and Wade continue to try to have zoning meetings when we were asked, we asked them not to.
That doesn't mean they're biased. They're just trying to form the board and serve like they're supposed to.
I need to clarify now.
Okay.
Doug talked to the commissioners several times. There was a lot of discussion. He received the letter, he took it to an attorney, he was advised. If you look at what was actually printed in the paper, it was beyond phase one. It had nothing to do with phase one. It's, it's in print, in the paper. Another clarification. Doug is not interested in the turbines in, in his fields and that because we run cattle and because we're out there working on fences. We just had a fire that took out a lot of fences. We don't wanna be out there this time of year trying to fix something. We've got cattle out there now. Having calves, we're out there all the time. That does not mean he's against the turbines. What his concern first and foremost has been the entire time is the way it's being done. And the actual opinion of everybody. He has called people on both sides. So when you say continuing to have a meeting, you make it sound like he is not neutral. Well, the fact of the matter is, he has put in a lot of time, a lot of phone calls, and he has gotten a lot of information from Heather. And there's a lot out there that this can be done, but it needs to be done properly. And what he felt was that you guys were getting bulldogged. And he is there to try to help. Now, I can't speak for Wade, but I got that impression from him too. So when you talk, um, I believe it was the third year, when you talk about getting rid of all of them? Come on, you've got somebody that shows up. You've got somebody that listens. You've got somebody that backgrounds. You've got somebody that has called other people to serve in positions. That's all voluntary.
And I think that's why we're not going to start all over, because we've got some good people on board.
You're right, you do, but please address them as good people instead of, we need to get rid of them all. And please address them as the people that they are. Have you guys called him and talked to him? 'Cause I think that's a mistake to say they're doing this, they're doing that, but you've never asked their opinion. I believe he's talked to Kurt. I don't think you, either one of you have sought him out. I, I would think it would be a good idea to go ahead and get him a phone call sometime. He'll talk to you. He's more than happy to talk to you, and he's tried to make other phone calls, and they are not returned. He's still waiting. So, I mean, I think you guys got the wrong impression from the get-go. I think he is mostly concerned about the county and the people that live in it and, and a neighbor with that, correct? So you got a good guy there. And he's up in June. You might want him getting back on there because he shows up. He shows up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One more thing. Everybody in this county is gonna have an opinion by now, because we've been talking about it as a county for almost a year. If somebody does not have an opinion either way, I don't know if that's someone you don't want on the board or not, 'cause they, they wouldn't be invested in, you know, talking to people and seeing what the big issues are in the county. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure he's a lovely guy. I'm guessing he has an opinion. And if you didn't ask interviews of everybody, you don't know how strong people's opinions are. You might think you do, but all those other people that applied, besides this person that you called last week, they might be just as neutral as, as this gentleman here. And then you're also disregarding the gender balance, which is needed for difference of opinion and for giving the opportunity to have, to have women be equally represented. Because we do have women farmers in the county. It's not, it's not just men owning land. I mean, we're not in the eighteenth century anymore. You, you gotta have that balance. And talking about it for the last two appointments, it just feels like you're completely disregarding not only state law, but the requests of people that have been applying. I mean, Nancy Smith has, has history with the FSA department. She's got plenty of background that would be helpful for the zoning commission. Bev's got the real estate experience. Heather's had all this time researching ordinances, not just wind ordinances, but all ordinances. So, I mean, you, you have some qualified women.
Nancy, a lifelong, upstanding citizens of Tama County, lifelong taxpayers. The applicants you guys have been given is exceptional. Yet, you continue to disregard the Tama County taxpayers. You continue to disregard the laws that you guys have imposed for your own benefit. That's it. Your own benefit. Not for our benefit.
No.
I think that's, that's ridiculous, John.
I am.
Then why did you go, why did you not say, no, our applicant is February twentieth? Why didn't you be open about that? That is the problem with this county. We were trying, I don't think you heard me, maybe, we were trying to get, that's the zoning board established, get it moving, so we can start to address the solar project that we talked about last week. We're, we're, we thought, I thought, I, you know, I know the one here really well. He's, he's an excellent man. I bet he is. He's worked for the county before through, through the, uh, public health. He'll be, he would not be biased. He would not be... That's your opinion. That is my opinion. Our opinion is, there's called nepotism here. No, there's no nepotism here. It's Karen's dad. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. That doesn't matter if Karen's dead. Karen's not appointed yet.
Why did you put a deadline on this in the first place?
Right.
You're not gonna stick with it.
Why was there a deadline put on these applications?
You had the qualified applicants within that time period that you set. Why are you going up?
The people that really care met your deadline.
And have been here every week for a year.
They met your requirements. And you all have your opinions.
Dan, I was in a public place this week, and a local government employee told me that the corruption is so deep in this half of the county that this group will never break the corruption, ever, in our lifetime. Boy, what an example right now.
I don't know, I have a clue what you're talking about.
I'm not giving you his name either, Dan.
I don't have a clue what you're talking about, Karen.
Really?
Yeah.
You just broke your own deadline, and you don't know what I'm talking about, Dan? Really, seriously? Okay. Must have graduated from South Tama.
Yeah, that, that's right.
Yeah.
You know, um, I just wanna remind you, I appreciate what you're doing, trying to get this zoning board going.
Right.
But I wanna remind you that last July, I announced that, um, T.C., uh, T.A.R. Renewables was knocking at my door, and they were approaching me to sign up agents. And so it's been a long time since last July that nothing's been done.
And we hear you are trying to get the zoning board up and going, but yet you just admitted you called Darren Thiessen not to meet. I never, I didn't say that.
I...
I never said that.
That wasn't said.
Where'd you come up with that?
I, I said he got a phone call.
He was called not to meet? The zoning was called not to meet. Is that correct?
They got a letter that discouraged him.
I faithfully got a letter from the attorney when we were being sued.
From Salt Creek's or Carlton's?
From...
I just, I just imagine it was Carlton.
From Carlton first.
Yeah.
But let's clarify that also. Larry, Mr. Vess, did say, and it's, it's on the tapes, that he requested the attorney to write the letter to the zoning boards. He said it was his idea.
Yeah.
So that, that plays in also. The fact that they decided to go ahead and try to move forward besides that block of already approved. They tried to move forward from there. So between the need, the, the conscious need and the fact that the request was made to the attorney, not the attorney himself requesting it, he just put his name to the bottom of it. That, that makes a difference to those gentlemen. So I, you know, I just want to clarify that that is where they came from.
Okay. Good question. Uh, did you guys seek an attorney opinion about, about appointing this gentleman to the board? No. So, if you, if the only requirements to appoint somebody to a board are that which he lied out, and I'm not part of this group, okay? I'm an, I'm an individual, I'm not part of this group. I was a county supervisor for six years of my headspace counting, and so I know you guys are in a tough spot. But what we, what I would have been, if you have certain requirements that are laid out, those are matter of fact, that are appointed outside of your legislative body, out of your legislative purview. And then the Iowa Legislature in two thousand nine enacted a law. I was a supervisor during this, I'm saying that you had gender balancing by two thousand thirteen. All of the boards had to be gender balanced by two thousand thirteen. If it was impossible to do that, you have to post it. The, the requirement by the law, you have to post it for three months. And if nobody meets the state requirements that are laid out, or your own requirements that has to be a resident in the Tama County and not in the city limits of whatever the jurisdiction is that you're trying to zone. If you have a female that's qualified, under their qualifications, not yours, you have to appoint that. If you don't appoint that person, you're looking for a lawsuit at that point. But that's why I was asking if you could look for a legal opinion about appointing a gentleman to this board. It seems like the process, I, I can understand why they're upset, but you guys had a, had a deadline back in September that, that, and they had, they had given you guys applications, but they were disqualified under your purview and, and your added legislative statute that it might be somebody who's biased, in, in your opinion. That itself is biased, but you, you hold, you're a board member, I'm the board supervisor, so you can hold that opinion, but it doesn't disqualify these people that have already applied. And so the, the process, what, what would need to happen, you need to open it back up. You need to table this, uh, a big, or a table this appointment. It needs to be tabled, you need to go through the process, open it back up for three months or until you get somebody who's qualified, who is a female, or you can just appoint a female to the board. Those are your options without seeking any kind of, uh, you're going to, it seems like you're navigating some street, torrential waters with landmines everywhere and trying to avoid lawsuits. This will guarantee you a lawsuit. In, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, that's...
I'm not an attorney, I'm a deputy, but I have been in your seats.
Deputy's one. Deputy's one. You got about a minute or a half?
To settle a rumor, I got a phone call over the weekend that the engineer resigned. Is this true? I don't believe so.
Not to my knowledge.
I think he's in the hallway. You could probably ask him.
I don't know, but I just got a phone call and said that he resigned. He's going to Buckingham County and staying there.
I have not got a phone call.
We, I believe we are... He's... He's a, I think we're gonna, he's not gonna work for both counties.
He's a, I think we're gonna, he's not gonna work for both counties. I believe it's here, his work.
Um, on this board thing, guys. I will say, we didn't seek him out. Dan knew him. And Dan was pretty passionate about how he was, how good a guy he was, and you know, everything. So, I felt comfortable not thinking about the wo- the woman thing. We were, I was freaking out. I want this solar thing done now. And Dan was the same way. And we felt like we had to get this thing going. So, we didn't, he had applied and Dan said. Um, he asked Karen if he, you, she thought he would be interested still. I, I don't, that's the only thing I wanna clarify. We didn't, that's how it went down. That's exactly how it went down. Now, on the board, um. I didn't realize, uh. Mr. Sash was on the board. I, I would really recommend to take him off. That's pretty hairy when he's getting one himself. I didn't know anything about that, but, um. I mean, I would be in favor if. I would put a woman in his place. I, um, and I never met, um, Dwayne, but I trust Dan and I, um, in that deal and. I think he'd be good, you know, other than the wo- the woman thing.
And that, and that he didn't apply on time, other than that too?
I didn't realize that either, um.
And I, what do you mean he didn't seek him out? If it's a friend of his that he's known from other things, and let's call and see if he's still interested, that would be seeking him out.
I, I, it's not, it wasn't like that. It really, I trust you guys. Um, I had no idea about the deadline, um.
Why would you go on with Dan's end and not interview all the applicants to find out your own opinion?
Cause at that time, I wanted to get that thing filled so we could get a moratorium.
But you guys can do a moratorium on your own. You don't need fillings to do it. You could do it, you can put on the agenda for next week, call the moratorium, call it something else. You guys have the power to do that. And then you fill zoning. You don't have to fill zoning first.
Well.
There's enough guys, there, there's four currently. They could meet. You can say, let's do a moratorium, let's let them meet. If they have a quorum, if they have at least three out of four there, you're good.
Um, I never asked Dan, is, does Todd's go around?
I, I believe so, but I'm sure.
I, I talked to him, right?
But it's pretty simple, isn't it, guys? You have an applicant that did not make meet the deadline. And I mean, it's not by a couple days. It's months.
You're right.
You have an ineligible applicant.
Go back and choose somebody within that time period, until there was somebody qualified and be done with it.
Or open it back up.
And just remember zoning makes recommendations. You guys are the ones that decide. So, if I'm in that board and the group of five of us make a recommendation. We present it to you, you know, you let it go through or you don't. It's not like, hey, you know, I'm gonna go do something and you guys have to accept it. It's just a recommendation board, that's it. Unpaid, that's all it is.
I know we're going over the minutes and I kinda, I kinda hope you guys.
Want to table it?
Can we, can I, can we just have a couple more minutes to get this through? I guess, in my opinion, which I'm not sitting in your guys' spot, I know it's pretty hot seat. I would get ahold of the current people that are on the board. Ask them if they're still interested in staying on the board. You might have a couple people that aren't. And then go from there, and you might not have to table it for three months because this is, this is kinda hairy and Doug's pretty thrilled to hear. You guys were gonna appoint somebody and he actually met him. Um, we went and voted Friday. So, but you've got a lot of qualified applicants that are willing to do side work also. Because this does take work. I mean, Doug, Doug knows it takes work, so maybe give everybody a call, see where they stand. And go back into your applications. You might be able to get your woman on there. And place us someone that's currently there and not have to do your three month extension. And Heather is correct, the law does say you guys can. Go ahead and put a moratorium on solar immediately. That's, you guys can do it, you just have to have it advertised. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna end the public comment, we'll start a regular meeting. I have a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'm second. Been moved to second of the minutes of last week. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Why?
We spent some time last week going out and, uh, trying to, uh, scratch ice on some rock roads. Luckily, over the weekend, rock on the, uh, excuse me, ice on the rock roads went away on its own. Uh, we also spent time obviously on the pavements, trying to get them in, uh, better shape for cars and, and such. So, uh, last week was ice. This week, we'll be back to hauling rock again. We got a number of places that we're still trying to get some rock hauled. We're not quite. It wouldn't surprise me if we decide to pull the trigger on our contract hauling within the next week or two. I wouldn't say that yet today, but that's coming shortly. Other things of, uh, yeah, we're looking at also taking the, uh, trying to lighten up the, uh, some of the vehicles like the, uh, taking the wing plows off of the trucks and. Uh, off of the blades also. We're not taking the wing post off yet. When we take the wing post off, that lightens the thing up quite a bit also. Anything we can do to lighten up the vehicle some now while the roads are soft, uh, is a, is a plus. But we still need to worry about more snow. It needs to be waiting back if we get more snow. We don't know if that's gonna happen yet or not, because there's still a lot of potential for that. Uh, other thing that we have to do this week, it's, uh. Maybe have a little bit of interest is, uh, we, uh, we have two, uh, salt facilities, places where we store salt. The way we buy salt for putting down on our pavements, we, uh, do it through the state bid. So, every year we tell the, uh, we send something into the DOT and we, uh. Tell them that we're looking for a thousand ton of salt, or whatever the number is. This year, it happens to be a thousand ton of salt and we're wanting to get out at the Toledo shop. We tell them a thousand, they have to bring us a thousand ton. We're at the point right now where we have not ordered any salt yet this year. Uh, but we have used some sand salt mixture. So, we are gonna work at trying to mix together some sand and salt. It's not that we need to, it's not that there's an urgent need that we think there's a bunch of, uh, ice or storms coming. But when we say that we're gonna, uh, buy a thousand ton of, uh, salt, we are required by the contract to buy at least eight hundred. We have to buy eighty percent of the contract. So, we're trying to use up, get the straight salt that we ordered, uh, dwindled down, so we can order it and fulfill our contract. That's something that's gonna be going on this week. It seems goofy, it has more to do with, uh, we are trying to work at fulfilling the contract. And that's all I have for you guys.
Uh, a couple things. Have you, Rod, I talked to Rod and he said, uh, Garrison is fairly short on inch clean. Have you talked to the, has, haven't we talked to them and told them that we're gonna want more?
I have not, no.
Okay. Who, you do that, or does?
We'll talk to, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know, Tim would do it or, or?
Well, yes.
Alright.
Answer's yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Um, I can talk to him too.
We can hear.
Um. Yeah, because we, I want inch clean and.
For right now, that's the.
Uh, well, it's, I want it in District One. I just think, we gotta do something different. If we keep doing the same thing over and over and over, that's why we're here. And it's not our fault that the rocks crap here, it's not our fault that the, the stuff's bigger equipment. Um, so, I am will- I'm willing to take some, I, I'm gonna experiment. I really am. And we're, we're talking stuff by ourselves, but I just wanna experiment, you know, um. I just remember as a kid going down the road and there was just all rock and you had three lanes where the tires were. But the rock was there, you know? Um, if they have a ditch, they need to ditch me on whatever. I mean, I'll, I'll make that clear. Cause I wanna try something. So, if you, if you live in District One and you have something different and you don't like it, I'm just trying stuff, man. Cause we, we gotta change what we're doing. These roads are sad. It's not just Tama County, by the way. Um, it's all around us. Everybody brings up Benton County. Benton County has four quarries in their county. We have zero. So, it, it's, it's a time thing. There's been multiple people saying that we've got all kinds of money for rock. We can have, we can have a million dollars for rock. We gotta get it to the road. I mean, I mean, we only have four full-time trucks, so, um. We know what's, we know what's a problem, and I just wanna, I'm willing to take the blame if something. I mean. I just wanna, we gotta do something different. That's just my mindset, um.
But there is one quarry in Tama County.
There is?
Montour. On Montour, it's in the past.
Alright, it's a mile in Tama County, yeah. So, if we can went from Dyers to get it from there, it would be a long way. Um, forgot the second, damn it.
There are three kinds of people in this world, those who can count and those who can't.
Yeah, that's true. Um. There's, there's two kinds of people in this county, ones that know how to dress and ones don't. You're, you're welcome. Um, I completely forgot what.
Some people do like Iowa State jackets.
I, it's hard to believe, man. Okay, I'm, I'm done. I forgot the other one.
I do have a question for Lilo. Um, when's the Deer Creek Project, uh, bridge replacement? When's that starting?
You talking about down here on Ben's thirty?
Yes.
So, April third is the late start date. Uh, PCI has not indicated a, a desire to be committed to start to finish earlier. Uh, there's no free winter work on it. What that means is that they start prior to April third and the weather's not good. They, um. If we get more snow or something, all of a sudden they get charged working days. Working days is what we use in order to. What I'm trying to say is expected by April third, it'll be ripped out. It, uh, it may start sooner. If we get closer to April third, the weather, decent forecast, if they approach me then and say that, uh. Uh, they're asking for free winter work, we may in fact give them free winter work just from the standpoint, if they can get a couple more weeks done. That, uh, it would move the thing along. We're worried about rag brad course in, in July.
So, the projected end period will be after July?
There's, uh, there's enough working days to push it into, uh, Halloween timeframe.
Okay.
It's a big project.
Um, how many miles of gravel are there in Tama County on?
It's nine hundred.
It's nine hundred.
I'm sure you have a lot of roads to look after. Just a heads up on one of those bad spots. It's on Anna Avenue, it's off the sixty-three, right by the, uh.
Substation.
By those towers, by the substation.
Yes.
Do you meter how much salt and sand your trucks put out when they're out fighting the snow?
Do we meter? We do not meter, we do not calibrate it like the state does. They've got a very good system that they use. We're not as fancy as that, no.
So, then I guess my next question would be, how do you know you need a thousand tons of salt if you don't know how much you're putting out?
We don't know how much winter there's gonna be in any given year.
Right.
This year, there hasn't been as need to put as much material down. Typically, the way that, uh, operators would do it and, um. This may or may not be fair, but they load up with, uh, put a load of sand salt on the back of their truck. They have a defined route. They have a rough idea of how much to put down in order to make it home back to their shed on that same route.
But you don't know if a bucket of sand salt makes waves, two and a half tons or?
Oh, I, I think we do know that, but we've got an idea of how much goes into the, uh, truck.
And then I've seen some of them have actual like brine tanks stuck to the side.
Most of them do.
Yeah. But I've never seen any liquid come out the back of the truck.
So, the liquid coming out of the back is just enough. It sprays the liquid out onto that rock salt as it's dropping. As it sprays it out in the rock salt, all it's doing is pre-wetting the material. So, and we, we pre-wet the material at the spin. Pre-wetting with, it's a calcium chloride brine. And it, what it does is, uh, two things, it, uh. When it hits the pavement, instead of it being dry, it'll bounce. If it's got a little bit of wet on it, it'll stick a little bit better and stay on. The other thing it does is it really helps it activate a lot faster.
Right.
Both things.
But you should see some kind of little moisture trail back there.
Not much.
Not much, no, no. No. I did it for twenty-five years. I even cut the hose. They sprinkled, they have sprink- or, uh, what do you call them?
Sprayers.
Yeah. And, um, I, I cut it off and just hosed it on there. Um, it was about a tank per rock. Um, he's correct on that, that.
How much salt do you go through to make your, well, I guess you use calcium.
Well, no, we use calcium chloride for that brine that pre-wets.
Right.
But it's sodium chloride rock salt, that's the chunk, that's.
Right, I, the state made salt brine, so.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The state does that though. The state engages in something called anti-icing. So, when they see a storm coming, they'll lay down, they'll spray out. And that you do see, it's sodium chloride and they do mix, uh, the sodium chloride brine on their own. I think they do it over here. But they, they make their own sodium chloride brine and, uh, spray it down in advance of the storm. And what that does is it helps prevent the bond of the ice to the pavement. Thank you.
That's all. I got an hour call for you at home if you want.
Not good, thank you.
Danny.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hey, guys.
Yeah.
Um. Just trying to see what I got for you. Don't. I think the only thing I have this morning is the. Uh. Resolution.
Resolution.
And I got the information on that. If you guys, do you wanna talk about that now or wait?
We can talk about it now if you want.
Okay. So, the resolution, um, we're with Neapolitan Labs. For, um, our website, we did, um, we were working with our other guy and, um. Had a little bit of a, of the issue with, um. We needed some changes made as we were, uh, developing it, and he tried charging us more money than what the contract said. And the contract explicitly, explicitly says that we can change two times, no additional cost. Um, he disagreed with us, um, and so, we've decided to go with somebody else. And we actually have a firm timeline. Um, it'll be done within fourteen weeks. And, um, so that's why we're asking some of the money, we, we're asking out of the ARPA funds, but we had already set aside the money for that anyway, so. We have the majority of it in the ARPA funds, but I need for you guys to be okay with us doing that. So, Neapolitan Labs does the largest amount of, amount of county government websites in the state of Iowa. And they do mainly just county websites. Which is really good because like with Laura and, um, Karen with, um, elections and stuff, there's a, a section that'll be in there for their election stuff. They automatically will update all state, um, law changes. We won't even have to do it because they'll do it for everybody that they service in the state of Iowa. So, we've had a couple meetings on it and, um, that's what the committee came, the website committee came to the conclusion that they wanted to switch.
So, you want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion then. You approve that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
And I'll read the motion real quick, and we'll approve it. Resolution two twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three A, a resolution to approve dispersment of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, President Biden signed the one hundred and nine trillion dollar American Rescue Plan Act. And whereas Tama County applied for and has received funds for the Amer- American Rescue Act totaling three point two million dollars. The Tama County Board of Supervisors has reviewed some requests and determined that some will qualify for the American Rescue Plan Act. And whereas based on the distribution guidelines from the U.S. Department of Treasury, the following projects have been approved for the use of the second round of said funds. Tama County website development not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars. Be it resolved that the Tama County Board of Supervisors endorses the dispersment of the American Rescue Act planned funds. For the item listed above and authorizes the auditor to make these payments as they are presented.
It's been moved to second. We'll have a rule call vote.
Okay, Karen.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution passed.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else? That's it. Go on to the claims. Have a motion to approve the claims? I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims, uh, all of the favor?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
I didn't hear him.
He did, I don't, he didn't hear.
Get it?
Uh, the opposed? Motion carried. That takes four. Okay, ARPA. Okay. We got left, just to appoint Dwayne, we wanna put that on.
I'll make a motion and table that.
I'll second that, I suppose you should.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, table the appointment that Dwayne got into the zoning board, all of the favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hey, does anybody else have anything else? Okay, we'll adjourn you at nine fifty. See you, Nancy. This is every person.
Sorry, Debbie just passed.